Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'm Chris Ray, and with me is Deputy Council President Zach Hall. Councilmember D. Michelle has an excused absence this evening. I'm going to call to order the March 14th, 2023 City Council Mobility and Infrastructure Committee. To start there, I want to talk about public comment. There are multiple public comment opportunities at tonight's meeting. There is a general public comment opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, or you can make comments after the presentation and council question and answer period on tonight's agenda items. Members of the public may address the council at this time in person or virtually. Those who signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. If you join us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand. If you're on a phone, press star three. If you have joined by computer or smartphone, look for a hand icon. This varies by device. One option may be to go to the participant panel and choose the raise hand icon in the lower right-hand corner. If you're in the room and did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. I'm going to wait for a minute and see if anybody has signed up this evening to speak.
Chair Ray, we have one person who signed up before the meeting, John Gert.
Okay, well, let me provide a few extra guidelines then. Citizen comments are an important part of the public process. We take them seriously and factor them into the decisions we make. Please direct comments to the whole council and not to individuals. While this is not a question-answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. For those online, when recognized, unmute your microphone or step up to the lectern. There's also a button on the microphone here, so make sure you press that and it'll turn the light red. State your name, address, and relationship to the city. Please speak clearly and pause frequently and limit your comments to five minutes. If you are attending virtually and do not respond after your name or phone number is called or your connection is lost unexpectedly, the meeting will need to proceed. We encourage you to rejoin if able. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory comments, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. Clerk, can you identify the first person who has signed up?
Yes, Chair Ray, John Gert.
John, step on up and... It's in the base.
Hi, my name is John Gert. I live in the Mirwood subdivision of South Cove area. Been there for 30 years. I'm also on the city's Sister City Commission, so I'm a commissioner as well. I probably reserve most of my comments to the Q and A period because I'd like to hear the alternatives first. But I'm very, very interested in this entire project. It was promised to our neighborhood when we were annexed into the city, and many of us had reconsidered being annexed because of the lack of response by the city. Would like to see it carried forward from 193rd all the way to Sunset Elementary School because that is a long pathway of very dangerous pedestrian traffic. And it is used a lot. I use it a lot. I walk into the city. I walk down to Lake Smamish Park, and it's scary. Done it at night. That was even more frightening. So I'll reserve most of my questions until I find out what alternative you pick. Thank you.
Yes, Chair, we have two participants online. I see no virtual hands raised at the moment.
And would anybody else here in the room like to make comment at this time? If not, I'm going to ask John if he turned the microphone off, otherwise we'll get feedback. Yeah, no worries. Okay, so thank you for that, and there will be other opportunities for public comment later in the meeting. We have two items on the agenda, and I know that ID 1387, the Northwest Smamish Road Project Options, is important, and that'll be the first one. And then after that, we're going to jump into ID 1291, which is an update on the Intelligent Transportation System Capital Project Options. So with that, Matt, are you presenting?
Chair Ray, may I interrupt? Should we do approval of minutes?
It's on the agenda, I guess so. Yes, approval of minutes. Council President and Deputy President, I think you had some corrections.
Yeah, I just wanted to make one change. So in response to our discussion about the septic policy of the sewer master plan, there's a comment that says, "Support moving forward." Support moving this forward to the full council. And I think we had had discussions about it being incorporated first into the sewer master plan and then that coming back to the committee so we can have a broader discussion. So I would just like to suggest and edit that it say, "Support adding this element to the broader sewer master plan for continued committee discussion." And then I think that captures our discussion on that point.
I think that's correct, too. So that will make that change. Since it's just you and I, I'm not going to do a vote, so we'll approve the minutes as amended.
Perfect.
All right. All right, now I get to move on. So, Matt, take it away.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening. I'm Matt Ellis, Utility Engineering Manager for the city of Issaquah, and I'm here tonight with Marina Bondala, who is a senior transportation engineer and will be the acting project manager on this moving forward. Also, virtually, I have Scott Johnson with HDR. He's the consultant project manager for this project. And tonight, we're talking about the Northwest Smamish Road Non-Motorized Improvement Project Preferred Alternative Selection. So the purpose of tonight's meeting is concurrence on the preferred cross-section as well as feedback on project schedule. And direction needed tonight is, does the committee concur with the administration's recommended preferred cross-section? And we want feedback on the scheduled considerations at the end. So project agenda. In this presentation, I will provide a bit of background on efforts to date on community engagement, which led us to develop evaluation criteria and ultimately the alternatives we've considered. This led us to a TAB meeting in January. We'll discuss staff's recommendation for preferred cross-section for this roadway and discuss project schedule considerations and impacts with our project. So here's our timeline.
Matt, just to be clear, so the TAB is the...
Oh, I'm sorry. I had that written down. Transportation Advisory Board. Thank you. Project timeline. We began this project in earnest in 2022. We completed the topographic survey, started environmental evaluation of critical areas, developed preliminary alternatives, and engaged with the community through a community survey in the latter part of September and October 2022, a community open house in November, and then the TAB meeting in January this year. Our goal for the remainder of 2023 is to get the design rolling once we receive concurrence on the preferred cross-section and begin the environmental permitting process. Our goal is to be substantially complete with the design by the end of 2024. And I'll get to why I say substantially complete at the end of the presentation. We will then provide a look ahead for construction options. So here's the project area. It's from 193rd Place to the state park. The purpose is to provide bicycle and pedestrian facilities along Northwest Smamish Road, and it's through along this corridor specifically. So here's the existing conditions. Basically, this can be broken down into two segments due to distinct areas. The east half of the project is adjacent to the Smamish Cove Park and the freeway and is constrained with steep slopes and wetland areas. The west half is adjacent to the sound wall that WashDOT, Washington State Department of Transportation, recently installed in 2020 through 2021 and is located next to residential driveways and private streets. This section has additional room where WashDOT relocated the retaining wall, but it's constrained in areas where we need to match into existing steep driveways. So in September 13th through October 3rd, we did a community outreach survey. We nearly had 600 responses to the survey. Some quick statistics. 12 neighborhoods were represented. However, 90% of those who took the survey live in the South Lake Smamish neighborhoods. 93% were owners and 3% were renters. The feedback from the survey stated that the biggest concern with the corridor was lack of sidewalk or pedestrian connectors, followed by quality of existing bike facilities, safety, vehicle speed, long travel time, and finally, environmental impacts was the least important concern. For the future improvements, the preferred treatment would be a multipurpose pathway. This was by far the treatment that was desired the most, followed by protected bike lanes, buffered bike lanes, sidewalk, standard bike lanes, and then finally, a sidewalk-level bike lanes was the least preferred. So on November 9th, we had a community outreach, open house. We had 48 people in attendance during the meeting. Basically, we presented a few different cross-sections at the open house and received the consensus that people really wanted some improvements. And there really wasn't a clear distinction between a wide multi-use trail or a narrow trail with onsite on-street bike facilities. We did hear a preference for no trees in the planters, a preference of a multipurpose path instead of a sidewalk. A few residents wanted us to consider an alternative where a multi-use trail was located on the south side of the road between Northwest Smamish Road and the freeway, which was not presented at the open house. And then the biggest concern brought up was the access to driveways, site distance, and the potential conflict points with new pedestrians and bikes within the corridor. So after the community survey, we developed six cross-section options. We presented these to the open house. At that point, we narrowed these down to four options that we presented to the Transportation Advisory Board. At that time, we recommended a preferred cross-section with a second alternative. And I will go through the four alternatives in the next few slides. This is alternative A. This is a 14-foot-wide pathway with a planter strip separated between the roadway and pedestrian users. In this alternative, there is no on-street bike facilities. This is alternative B, which is a narrower multi-use trail, eight to 12 feet wide, and a limited planter strip, so we put one in where we could, where we could fit it in, where we wouldn't be making too much of an impact, and then six-foot bike lanes and wide travel lanes. This alternative did not score as high as others and was not recommended through the scoring matrix or concurrence with the TAB. Alternative C is very similar to alternative B, and this is actually scored much higher. The only difference was that there was a two-foot buffer between the bike lanes and traffic, and the traffic was reduced to 10-foot lanes. And then this is the alternative where we considered a multi-use trail on the south side of the road between Northwest Smamish Road and the freeway. This is the exact same thing as alternative A, but we flip-flopped it. But again, we are not recommending this through the scoring matrix evaluation or concurrence with the TAB.
Can I ask a question on the picture?
Save that till we get to comments.
And I'll come back to that if you need to.
We'll bring it back, we promise.
All right, so we evaluated 10 criteria that involved risks and level of impact, including impacts to wetlands, impacts of private properties, code compliance issues, and a level of effort to complete the work. We gave these criteria one point each. We then evaluated five criteria based on non-motorized use, including driveway access and safety for both vehicles and bikes and pedestrians, the pedestrian experience and cycle experience for recreational users as well as commuter users. Since this was based on experience and use of the corridor once complete, we gave these criteria two points each. We then completed a qualitative evaluation assessing each alternative to each other. The full analysis is in the packet. So based off of that evaluation, if we looked at just the impacts and the risks criteria, alternative A scored the highest. And this is the wide multi-use trail with a planter strip separating cars from the trail users and no bike facilities on the roadway. And it scored high because it had the smallest footprint, meaning the easiest to construct and the least impacts or concerns we needed to be aware of. And our estimate to construct alternative A was about $11.5 million. But based on the high emphasis non-motorized criteria, including user experience, alternative C, the narrower multi-use trail with buffered bike lanes, scored the highest. This alternative is estimated to be $3 million more than alternative A at roughly $14.5 million. This is based on a wider footprint, meaning higher retaining walls, more stormwater facilities, et cetera.
Matt, question from Deputy Council President Hall.
Yeah, go ahead. Thank you, just a real quick one about the price. So is this just construction dollars and utilities? Or does it include right-of-way acquisition on that stuff?
It is. We are anticipating none of these have major right-of-way impacts. We have lots of right-of-way in the corridor. That's the one thing that we have. But we do have a lot of impacts to environmental issues such as a wetland and steep slopes. So it's all construction, but with a contingency on there, too.
Okay, so not design or anything like that?
No, design is already funded for this project, and so either one could be designed. Let's see. So at the Transportation Advisory Board, we presented on January 25th, 2023. We recommended alternative C, and six members were in agreement with that alternative. And the rationale was it provides facility for both types of users, for both pads and bikes as well as commuters and recreational bike users. It also separates the high-speed users who use the street from more novice users along the multi-use trail. And then cyclists would not be required to cross the roadway at either end of the project like you would in alternative A. Two TAB members preferred alternative A because it completely separates non-motorized users from the vehicle travel. It's also a wider pathway to facilitate the use and is a lower-cost project because it's a smaller footprint. So again, staff's recommendation and in concurrence with the majority of people at the TAB meeting, we are recommending alternative C, which is shown here. And again, what we're seeing here is the eight-to-12-foot multi-use trail with five-foot bike lanes, two-foot buffers, and 10-foot travel lanes. And a planter strip is not shown, however, we would install it where we see fit. That's to your point about right-of-way acquisition. It's one of those things that we can make wider or narrower or remove to fit space constraints. So that is the end of the fun part of the conversation. Are there any questions from you guys before I get into project schedule?
I think we're going to wait until you.
Okay, fair enough. So WashDOT will be impacting Northwest Smamish Road, Washington State Department of Transportation, as part of their Fish Passage Culvert Replacement Project. We don't have a schedule for their work. Their design will influence the design and construction of our project. Currently, they're slated to do a culvert replacement between 2024 and 2029 within this corridor. Currently, funding has not been secured for our project for the construction phase, and we are currently developing the cross-section. So this is part of... If once we get concurrence, we can at least get our project to substantial design completion. So just to give you a quick heads-up on WashDOT's work, they will be, as part of their culvert replacement project, they'll be going to multiple locations, but one of those is West Village Park and Schneider Creek. West Village Park Creek and Schneider Creek. What they're proposing to do is combine the two creeks between Newport Way and the freeway and then combine them into one bridge crossing at the Schneider Creek crossing location and then route through Smamish Cove Park. What that does to our project is that they are proposing to raise the roadway by about six feet through that corridor to facilitate that bridge. And you can see the orange is our project limits and red is roughly where WashDOT anticipates they need to raise the roadway.
Hey, we'll get to that in just a little bit. Thanks.
So WashDOT impacts. Yeah, so they're proposing a new bridge for Schneider Creek, raising the roadway up to six feet. This will also require detour impacts from WashDOT's work onto both Newport Way and Northwest Smamish Road. And again, like I said, the schedule is currently undefined because they have multiple crossings that they will be replacing between 2024 and 2029 within the city of Issaquah. So we looked at opportunities for our project. We had three considerations that we're looking at. Construct prior to the WashDOT project is consideration A. Consideration B is delay the project until after WashDOT is complete. Or option C is to phase a project or break it into segments. So we took a deep dive into this recently. In consideration A, construct prior to WashDOT project, there are some benefits, including developing a usable facility early for the community. However, the facility will be impacted and will interrupt service as WashDOT does their work. The drawback is there's a large portion of the work will be immediately impacted by WashDOT once we're done, and there's potential for construction schedule risk since we don't know when WashDOT will complete their work. They're currently using a design-build project, and they have not created a schedule. Also, construction funding, funding timing, and position within the CIP is still being sorted out. Consideration B, delay the project until after WashDOT is done. The benefit to this is there would be uninterrupted use. The project would be sequenced and designed with other construction projects in mind. Timing would be... We have time to secure funding, and WashDOT is committed to forward compatibility. So they would work to make sure that their project is forward compatible with ours to make sure it all works together. Again, the drawback is impacts would be... We wouldn't be able to construct this for several years, and this leads to cost escalation and no facilities in the interim. Consideration C is to phase the project, break it into segments. And the benefit here is it would, again, be forward compatibility. We would be able to construct a few segments earlier on in the process. But the drawbacks would be there would potentially be facilities to nowhere as we build a section of trail and then terminate the project with no facilities while WashDOT does their work. We're worried about compatibility conflicts and how it all tie into WashDOT's project, and there may be unforeseen design impacts and cost escalation. There's also additional traffic on Northwest Smamish Road during WashDOT's work, which could impact the new facilities. And we don't want to put a whole bunch of new traffic on the roadway right after we build it. So currently, staff is recommending consideration B, sequencing the project until after WashDOT work is complete. We will continue the design through near completion. This way, once WashDOT is done with their work, the design can be dusted off, minor updates can be changed, and we can construct the project. We also have the advantage of wrapping up the design and making modifications while WashDOT's design builder completes the design for the Schneider Creek culvert project. So any modifications or changes to the design can be accounted for in our project. So timing and next steps. Shown here again is our timeline. As I said earlier, our goal for the remainder of 2023 is to get the design rolling once we receive concurrence on the preferred cross-section and begin the environmental permitting process. Our goal is to be substantially complete with the design by the end of 2024. And then, pending committee feedback, staff will carry forward a recommendation to the city council. And pending council direction, the project team will proceed to a 30% design level as quick as we can. Throughout this process, staff will continue public communication and engagement and coordination with Washington State Department of Transportation. So again, direction needed. Does the committee concur with the administration's recommended preferred cross-section? And we would like your feedback on the scheduled considerations.
Thanks, Matt. We're going to take a few minutes with some questions, and then we'll go to public comments. So Deputy Council President, any questions for Matt?
Thank you. Yeah, I've got five or six, if that's okay. Thank you very much for all the hard work you all have done in this. I appreciate it. Let's see. So I'm just going to start in no kind of random order throughout the presentation, so if that's okay. So first one is... So I grew up in that area. I grew up in South Cove, so I'm pretty familiar with this road, having biked and walked it many times. The road, in particular, by the pinch point that we like to call it here in the city, there are a lot of turnoffs and driveways from people who live right there. So how have we kind of been thinking about how, in particular with alternative A or alternative C, where we'll have facilities on that side that are currently wider than they are right now? How are we thinking about how that will impact driveways, people trying to get out, even waste management collection? Because right now, that's part of the big problem, is people put bins out there, and so then bikes have to swerve out into the road, which causes dangerous, you know? So how are we thinking about these kind of things?
So we have not gone too deep a dive into the actual design implications for each driveway. We know that there are going to be some challenges with either cross-section that we propose. The advantages of both are that there's going to be a wider area for cars to pull out of. They will have to watch out for pads and bikes as they get out. But there will be more opportunity potentially for them to, A, put bins out or things like that, especially because we won't have a narrow sidewalk, but we're going to have pretty wide facilities there. Again, like I said, even with alternative C, there is opportunity for a planter strip, which could help facilitate that as well. So we'll go into... Once we get into the design in earnest, we'll be looking at site distance as a major consideration and then also things like crash pickup and other elements that really we'll need to kind of vet.
Okay, so much more to come on those.
Much more to come on those, yes.
Understood, got it. Let's see. So I've heard this before. We had one public commenter bring this up, that the entire corridor, all the way down to Sunset, is actually in need of facilities. Have we... I'm not considering we expand the scope of this project because it's already very expensive as it is, and this is what was promised. But have we considered adding additional phases of the project as future consideration projects? And the CIP is just something to make sure we've kind of bookmarked this as kind of a need in the future?
We have. However, there's quite a bit of need in the CIP and then also the Transportation Improvement Plan, the TIP, which is the one that we carry to state. And so I think there's a large laundry list, unfortunately, above that because, as you said, this is just, you know, three-quarters of a mile to go the extra... I don't know if it's a mile and a half or whatever it is. Substantially more money.
Absolutely, yeah. I just... Yeah, if there's a way for us to document this somehow, just so we know in the future that this is kind of a need, not that it's any more or less important than the other future needs that we have, but in the very least that we're documenting it, it would be good. So talked about waste collection. Can you go to the existing conditions picture kind of toward the beginning? There are two, where the sound wall is and then also along the state park wetland.
Yeah.
So we've definitely picked up some more space down the corridor a little bit, down by the sound wall. But here, over by the wetland, it's just really hard to picture how all these facilities would fit there. So can you kind of talk us through what are the future steps to gain the space?
Yeah.
Just so we can kind of wrap our heads around it.
Absolutely. So originally, we were calling the part that was by the sound wall the pinch point because we had a constraint between the old retaining wall and the narrow driveways that sloped up. And if we widen the roadway, those driveways... And if we widen the roadway, those driveways would become steeper, hence the pinch point. And we couldn't, we couldn't expand. But Wash Dot widening the roadway at that location allowed us to have more access to play around with. So we have a little bit more room there to do what we want to do. However, now this is our pinch point because we have a stream, we have wetlands, and we have a steep slope. So all that is cost because it requires, we have a wider footprint than we are currently showing today. And that requires retaining walls is the main driver and why this is gonna cost more money. And again, with Wash Dot's work, if they raise the roadway and we're widening the roadway, those walls get bigger. And that's a thing we're talking about with the state at the moment because they, again, have promised forward compatibility, but there's a lot we have to still figure out with them.
So speaking of that, raising the, so they're hoping to make it forward compatible with our project?
They, that is their requirement.
Oh, okay.
Because as long as it's on our capital improvement plan to do this project, we provide them with the design as far as we can, we make it, that's why we need to get the cross-section kind of implemented and provide to Wash Dot so they can pass this off to their design builder. And then they can run with kind of how that all correlates. And we can, we'll continue the collaboration and work with the state as well as their contractor through this whole process. But they will have to make sure that their portion can match ours in the future. Because if they raise the roadway first before we widen, there's some challenges that we're still trying to figure out.
So my next question is kind of that. So if it is the direction of this committee that this needs to happen sooner rather than later, is it possible for their, or for our project to be forward compatible with theirs? Vice versa?
Hi, Emily Moon, Public Works Director and sitting in for the Deputy City Administrator I wanted to convey to the committee and to public that's here tonight or watching, we are aggressively pursuing Wash Dot's contribution and coordination on our project. It is extremely complicated. Wash Dot is working with a federal injunction that has no flexibility. There are a lot of elements about our project that we know even before Wash Dot's project has reached 30% design are gonna be incredibly affected by. If we were to attempt to do our project ahead of Wash Dot, I'm very confident that we would have to tear out 40% of our project and redo it in one way, shape, or form. That's a significant expense. We can continue to work with Wash Dot to advocate that they pay for those sorts of impacts, but I think there's risk and ambiguity in this moment. That's why staff is recommending that we do a different sequence, that we prepare our separate projects' design in tandem and that we keep track to some degree. We're gonna design our project close to 100%, but with time and the ability to go back and fine tune. We want to design it to our expectation, our preferred cross-section, so that Wash Dot can then come to us and say, great, city of Issaquah, we see what you want to do, here's what we need to do. And then we can look at what the difference is, say, height of a retaining wall or the elevation of the road. And we can say, here's the difference, this is the impact to our project, you need to contribute to this difference. There are ways that both of us can design to that middle point and also construct our projects. But I think it will be very difficult for us to go ahead of their construction.
And then one other element to that is just the, there will be detours for both Northwest Mammash Road as well as Newport as they do their project. We're also, I think we're doing the Newport, a portion of the Newport, 54th to SR900 during this next CIP. And so that will also have some impacts too. So any detours, we don't want to have on a brand-new facility because that could degrade that facility a bit too.
Is that just me not being an engineer? Is that just because, you know, at first, you don't want to over exceed capacity on a new road or something like that?
It's just we're gonna be, have a lot more cars and trucks, trucks especially, and trucks. The bigger the truck, the more impact it has on a facility. So if we put a brand-new pavement in and new facilities everywhere, and then we put a bunch of trucks on there, it can, even though it'll be constructed to meet those standards, there is gonna be some wear and tear that is, we have to count for.
There's also the burden to the community of just continued discussion.
That is.
Construction over and over. Okay. I appreciate the kind of reality check on this, actually. That answers some of the rest of my questions then. So Councilmember Ray, I'll take it back over to you.
Okay. Thanks, really great. So the culvert replacement is from 2024 to 2029. Do we have any sense of where in that window this might happen?
So we talked today about that with the state. They, we don't have a sense because this project is going to a design-build contractor, which means that they will set the schedule. Because they're also doing Lewis Creek, which will impact Newport Way and West Lake Mammash Parkway, as well as SR9, Tributaries Tibbetts Creek at the intersection of SR900 as well as Gilman Boulevard. And so all these things, it's a big workload that they need to deal between 2024 and 2029. However, they did say that we are able to put conditions in if we want their project to go, this project to go maybe in the earlier portion. They didn't give us a date, but an earlier side or the latter part to help facilitate this project. So we could say, hey, Wash Dot, can you please do this Schneider crossing on the earlier side as a priority so that way we can complete our work? That would be something that we could request of the state.
So what kind of influence do we have over Wash Dot? I mean, I think it's an interesting partnership and, you know, and we're very much in this boat together. And what can we do?
It's an excellent question. Oftentimes, as you know, we rely on our regulatory authority. Here, we have very little, quite frankly. The project is largely, I'm gonna use the word exempt, it may not be the most accurate term to use, from quite a bit of local permitting. So we don't have that lever. But they need our cooperation in order to meet the injunction deadline. There are utilities the city needs to relocate. There's coordination in terms of traffic control. There's a whole bunch of things that they will be working with us in order to facilitate their project. We have the ability to ask, we have the ability to advocate, we have the ability, as Matt said, to propose conditions to the RFP that the design builder will have to fulfill. And that's where we're spending most of our time and energy right now, is trying to really identify what the impacts are and therefore how we might be able to mitigate them through assigning conditions to this RFP and this eventual construction contractor. So that's the leverage that we have. I think one of the big pieces, as Matt said, is they are interested in hearing from us about sequence of projects. That is in and of itself very complicated too, given the stream relocation runs from, you know, one end of the project nearly to the other end. And you have to do things in a certain sequence. And we also have suggested already a condition of not closing both Newport Way and Northwest Mammash Road at the same time. We do not think that that is in the best interest of the community. So we have to balance things. But our leverage is really in those sorts of conditions that we can apply and our speed at which we can provide them with decisions. There will be limited council action on this project as we have to transition ownership of various pieces of right-of-way, for example. But I don't think that's true leverage because, again, I think the federal government can step in.
Yeah. So is Wash Dot paying for all of the culvert work? Is that correct?
Yes. So that's the one advantage we have, is that this is a culvert block between Newport Way, I-90, and Northwest Mammash Road for both West Village Park Creek and Schneider Creek. I'm gonna go to that just so you can see. So they are paying for, which is unusual for their circumstances, a bridge on Newport Way for West Village Park Creek. My mouse, oh, my mouse does show up right there. And then the bridge on West Lake, Northwest Mammash Road for Schneider Creek. So there will be facilities that they are paying for within city right-of-way for this project, which is a unique thing just because the culverts extend beyond the state right-of-way.
And the reason that there's a large segment of the road that's affected is because to have a gentle slope so that they can put the bridge in in a gentle slope?
Yeah. Right now, it's a culvert. I think it's 36 inches wide, maybe a little bit bigger, maybe a little bit smaller. And they're combining the creeks, so it has to be bigger. But there's all, and they don't want to impact the walls, so they just installed. But they also need to put a bridge in to facilitate this, the creek crossing. So it's too big to put into a culvert. At least, that's their initial assessment. Again, they're still going through the preliminary design before they hand this off to design builder. But their initial assessment is saying that these crossings will be bridges, which is our larger structures. They have to be pretty high to account for flooding and sediment transport and things like that. So yes, it'll be raised by about six feet, also to help facilitate utilities through the corridor.
Not sure how to ask this one, but, so our current plan is we're moving ahead with design. That gets us how far down the design path by the end of '24?
We can get to like, I'd say 95%, where we're mostly there. We may wait on a few permits and stormwater stuff we might have to dust off, depending on when we construct, because it might change the guidelines and concurrence for that. But we can be near to the finish line, just basically dust the project off, make sure we're still in compliance with our city codes and regulate requirements, and then go to construction. But the nice thing is it's not like we just close the door and end this project. We have the opportunity to carry this forward through Wash Dot's project and design. So that way, once they're done, we can basically have this ready to go.
So do you see that there could be a situation where this culvert is deferred till late in the cycle? And it would make sense for us to move forward early? If we're done with design in '24, they're not gonna do this until '29? Is that something that you've thought about? Because I hadn't until just now?
So I would say we want that sort of feedback tonight. Having said that, we're gonna take your feedback, we're gonna continue to talk to Wash Dot about what are real possibilities. Thing that goes through my mind is if we construct on that portion, that means Wash Dot is likely to be working on Newport. And again, we have this condition that's supposed to be toward our benefit. Do you see the circular nature of this? Where we want to keep Northwest SAM open while Newport Way is under construction? So we want, we want the input. We're gonna add that to the puzzle to try to figure out what timing truly works with their project. But I think, I think both right now where we sit are possible, that they could put this portion of their work early in their construction schedule. I think it is also possible that despite us maybe even advocating that they do it early, that we find that doesn't work with the sequence of work that they have to do on the other roadway corridors.
This is, this is hard. So, so I think that this is a difficult scheduling thing. And, you know, this is, this is not Project Management 101. You've got a bunch of different interconnected projects, and you also have some resources, that is this piece of real estate, that are constrained. And you can only use the, you know, so we're trying to maximize the use of that resource. And then if you start factoring in things like just mobility around town and keeping Newport open while this is being done, it adds a whole layer of complexity. That being said, I think we can, you know, I think it makes perfect sense to move forward with design because we know what the, no, you stop because I don't know this. Will the design be affected by post-culvert work? I mean, so we'll do the design, then they say, oh, shucks, it's all different now.
Yeah, that's, that's one of the concerns. Again, it's not like we end, we stop, close up shop right now. We continue the design no matter what. Because once the design builder, Wash Dot's contractor is on board, they'll start their design process and they're very fast. But we'll continue our project so that way we have that compatibility. And they will work with us to make sure that the two projects are compatible in one regard or the other, no matter who goes first.
And Chair Ray, we are also advocating that if we do have to go back and redo portions of our design for one reason or another, that Wash Dot sees that as something they have to compensate for.
I think that would be fair. I think that'd be fair. Yeah, I'm just trying to think about how we keep this ball rolling, and I know you are too. And at the same time, recognizing that we have a very dynamic environment that we're working in. So I don't, this is, this is hard. I mean, we've talked about this, it's hard. Zach, anything else? Any other questions? So I'm gonna do something kind of a little different because this is kind of complex today, if you're okay with this. If you do have some questions during the next phase of public comment, and we can answer them really quickly, I'll ask Matt to answer them. If you have questions that we can answer real quickly, we'll get your contact information and we'll follow up with you offline. So we truly, really do want your feedback. And as you can see, that this is not an easy, easy thing, so all the guidance we can get from you is super helpful. So with that, I'm gonna see if there's anybody who'd like to make public comment at this point. Did you want to say something?
I just wanted to say, I think we have a representative from the Transportation Advisory Board here too. So would love to, if he's willing, would love to hear kind of how that conversation went as well.
All right. Julian, do you want to go first?
Julia Midlil, resident of Issaquah and vice chair of the Transportation Advisory Board here. Just wanted to shortly discuss what we were talking about in the meeting where we discussed these options. Option D was immediately taken off the table because we shared our experiences, and particularly my experience and other folks' experiences, that being sandwiched between two very busy roads, especially being right next to the freeway, is just not desirable. And it also contains the idea of the multi-path being shared by everyone. And then we kind of took the staff notes about option B for granted, so we kind of eliminated that from our consideration. We really had a robust discussion on A and C. And you can see that by the vote breakdown or recommendation breakdown, where six of us, including me, voted to go with C, and then two of us went for A. The reason that the majority broke for C were a few, but a couple of the reasons were, you know, for outside funding. It does cost about $3 million more than option A. But for outside funding, we thought that option C would work better because it does have that continuity. option C would work better, because it does have that continuity of bike network throughout the whole corridor. And so it might not be likely that we actually acquire the funding to complete a multi-use path from the west end of this project all the way to Sunset Elementary. And so we were just thinking that it might be better for outside funding, as well as, you know, stormwater improvements. There are different grant options for that as well, and so we were talking about those outside options. And we also talked about the community outreach process, and kind of thought about it in the sense that it was, community outreach was definitely weighed heavily in favor of the neighborhood, neighborhood-focused outreach. And Newport and Sammamish, Northwest Sammamish, those are two major ways to get in and out all points west of Issaquah, all points east of Issaquah, if you're on the bike. So it is the major way, Northwest Sammamish and Newport. And so that regional commuting corridor, because that's what it is, it's not certain that multi-use pathway would serve best for the folks who are using that to get to work or getting to some recreational activities. And so that's kind of where we discussed there. Now, the two that broke with the majority, kind of talked about it as, you know, the multi-use pathway being best for the South Cove area neighborhoods, because it might be a wider place where you can take everyone, take the whole family, to the Lake Sammamish Park. So that was kind of perspective from the two tab members who disagreed with the majority. And I don't think there was anything further, but I'll come back for the ITS recommendations as well. Thanks.
Thanks so much. All right. John, come on back.
I was really curious about the six-foot rise in the roadway, where that's going to take place. That could make some of those driveways really steep, and where that's going to take place, and that's going to make the road higher than the freeway in some spots, possibly?
Very good question. So the red here, should have changed to a different color, but the red here is the WashDOT work, and that's basically the limits of where they taper back down. So the good news here is, and probably partly why they did it this way, is the rise would be within the Sammamish Cove Park area, so would not impact any of the driveways. If they did West Village Park Creek, which is this location here, then there would be substantial impacts to driveways. But since they're combining the two on Newport, there won't be that impact. But they are raising the freeway as well. So there's substantial impacts to both the, yes, there's going to be four major bridges on the freeway, and this is just one of those. So it's, it's big. And it will, yeah, and it will, actually, they're looking about combining the bridge on Northwest Sammamish Road with the freeway, just a nuanced thing.
Hey, John, can, if you're going to, John, 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 if you come to the microphone, otherwise we can't hear you.
I wish they had already, you know, cut off that rise rate at 193rd, because as you're going up the hill, you really can't see over the hill very well. And it would greatly improve, I think, safety of that road, if they could somehow, you know, regrade that whole road along there.
Come on up. State your name and address and...
Hi, my name is Mary Atkins, and I live near the South Cove area. Longtime Southeast Bellevue resident, couple, three, four years in Issaquah. Now, mine is a really simple question, but I've tucked my head over by my husband and said, do you understand this? So I understand a lot of what's been discussed, but when you say four bridges on the freeway, I'm picturing underneath, and the freeway becomes the bridge over the culvert, but I don't really know.
That's correct. The creek is underneath.
And they go, if the freeway is this way, we're here, Sunset Elementary is down over here, these bridges are under, perpendicular.
Perpendicular, that's correct.
Thanks, Mary. Sir?
Hi, Jim Mantel from Issaquah. Does work, doesn't it? Hey, thank you for the presentation. Given the massive, the question is, given the massive change to Northwest Sammamish, will WashDOT be funding a portion of that road construction? Because it's going to be fairly significant and help subsidize the bike lane? Is that a possibility?
So, that is a harder question than you think to ask or answer. Their mandate is they are, this is a fish barrier project, where they are removing fish barriers, which is the bridge and stream work underneath the bridge. However, they have said that they need to make this a forward-compatible project. Whether they do it for us or after us, they need to somehow merge with our project. And we're still vetting through a lot of those issues on who pays for what, so I can't give a great answer at this point, because we haven't definitively figured that out yet. But they have said that they are going to, it will work together, and if they had their way, they wouldn't want to do anything, just put the bridge in, or not even do Northwest Sammamish Road. But they're willing to do this just because they can't just put a bridge to nowhere. They have to have, connect it, and so it'll have to work together in some way. Good question.
And then I do have a request, because we're looking at potentially nine years, and I bike recreationally along Northwest Sammamish, and there's a lot of debris on the road, there's a lot of uneven pavement on the road, and it's dangerous, given cars as well. Can we increase the maintenance of the road for one road quality, I should say, the bike road quality, as well as sweep it regularly, this, for the debris, rocks, and garbage, and, you know, things that fall off cars? I think that'd be needed for safety purposes. Thank you.
Dr. Moon?
Thank you. Appreciate that comment. We are trying to give more attention to Northwest Sammamish Road in terms of maintenance. In particular, as you've pointed out, the pavement is starting to fail. And we have put off a little bit of work, because every time we think we're ready to go, WashDOT comes through and says, we have another project that's going to impact your road, whether it's sound walls or now with the Fish Passage project. We can't wait any longer, and so our staff is having a conversation right now. We've made council members aware of this pickle that we're in, that we probably will need to go and do an overlay to just put the Band-Aid on for a few years, so it has better rideability and safety, and get us to the point where we can do this full reconstruction project. So I'm anticipating that will be happening in the next year, hopefully.
Thank you. Sir, come on up.
Hi, I'm Sam Elder. I live in Eagle Cove, which is four houses that are essentially houses three, four, five, six, three, four, five, six, from the park. So the first question that I had is, do either options A or C affect the wall that's in front of our house?
So, we have not completed our design yet, but we are aware of the wall issue, being that even though it's in right-of-way, if we moved it, there would be no place to park behind the wall. So, yeah, we're, because, the good news there is that WashDOT did move that giant retaining wall, so there's a lot of more room there. So we presume, or at least, the initial evaluation for both A and C, the preferred alternative, there is room without touching the wall. It might be a little tight there, but we can get it in without impacting the wall, which has been one of the concerns I've had, too.
Yeah, and actually, right in front of our wall is a metro stop. Is that stop still going to be there, or is that going to be, what happens to that? Because if it's tight, I don't see how you get a bus there.
That is a good question. Go ahead.
Oftentimes, when we do these major corridor projects, we look at elements like that, existing conditions, and what needs to change, and that does include transit stops. And so it is a possibility that the transit stop may, may change. Our goal would still to be, of course, to have service on that corridor and make it, make the stops and locations that are easier for people to get on and off. So we'll have to look at that as we move forward with the design. It's possible it may move.
Okay. So another question I have is, there's a big triangular area on the south side of the road currently. It goes all the way down to zero at what I consider to be the pinch point, which is the far east side of the sound wall. And then it actually is quite wide when you go to the very far end of that triangle. And I've never heard anyone explain what happens to that tri, I guess you can kind of see it, there's grass there now, but it actually gets quite wide by the time you get to the end of it. And maybe that question of what happens with the triangle goes with my next question, which is, the reason that it feels so unsafe to drive down that road is that the cars go down it at 50 miles an hour. It seems like it's an additional freeway lane. And there needs to be some kind of traffic calming. What I brought up at the public meeting before was that the road is too straight. It's like a drag racer's dream, that you could just go right down this thing as fast as you want, and it seems to me that changing the road so that it's not perfectly straight there might help calm it down, or some other traffic calming thing needs to be done. So is there a plan to use the triangle and the traffic calming to address this?
So, two different things. So the triangle, or at least the dirt section that you can see in the picture, yeah, that is our right-of-way. What the state, WashDOT did was they basically just put a curb where the existing edge of asphalt was. So we have all that room to play with, so that will be converted to whatever facility we can, we finally determine, so we can maximize that space. So that will all be, this, this whole alignment will be changed through this corridor. Now, Northwest Sammamish Road is an arterial, so the ability to wiggle the roadway isn't really a thing that we do on arterials. However, what we're doing, we are considering, and alternative C does this well, is narrowing the width of the roadway, the lanes especially. That should help slow down cars, and then we're also considering options to reduce the speed limit as well.
Okay. And if I can do one more question, this is my last one. There's currently a pathway that goes from Northwest Sammamish Road down into the city park, not the state park, but the city park. And if you raise that road six feet, there's no way you could go down that anymore unless there were stairs or something, because it would make it incredibly, it's already kind of dangerously steep. Is there any plan to address that, so that you can get access to the city park as well as the state park?
That is a harder question, because those are, what's the word? They're not designated trails, even though they're there. So they're kind of volun, not volunteer trails, I can't remember the proper terminology. But we are looking at how to further use of Sammamish Cove Park, the city park there, that open space with the football field slash trail through there. So we're still, we're looking at how to make this project compatible with that. It may mean that there is an access point at a different location, or a different way of accessing it. Also, the state park is looking at doing different trails through, through Sammamish State Park. And so how this project connects to those trails is another thing we're considering and working with the state park on.
Matt, it might make sense to kind of loop in our Parks Department here also into this discussion, if that's going to be a factor.
Yes, we're collaborating.
Great, thanks.
And am I correct in believing this is the question part, not the comment part?
No, this is the comment and question part. Generally, it's the comment part, and we don't do questions, but we're, we really wanted to get questions out.
Well, I appreciate that. Can I say my two cents advocating?
Please do, yeah, absolutely.
I mean, it seems, I would advocate for option A. And the reason that I would advocate for A is because it is narrower, and that there are a lot of people that are along this road that are affected, and the driveways are going to be affected, and the access in and out, and I'm concerned about safety. It's already kind of rough getting out of those driveways. I do it multiple times a day, and if it's any steeper, or the sightlines are cut down more, it's going to make it even more difficult. Also, it does get very narrow. I continue to believe it's the end of the sound wall that's the pinch point, and if you make the project wider, it's going to mess up the driveway of the first house, the Brackens House, on there. And then the last point is, I think if you, if you do connect it with the city park, now you've got additional options for people on foot. You only really need to make it down to get into the city park, and then there's actually trails already there. Now, I get it for bikes, you're going to want to stay on the road, but for pedestrians, we never go down to that entrance at the state park, we always go into the city park. And my guess is, that's where people would really like to go on foot anyway, so making that connection there would be very important. And then you only need to worry about bikes for that eastern half of the trail. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any, anybody else? Come on.
Hi, Logan Stromberg, a lifelong resident of South Cove. My question is going to be why the council didn't consider option D to have a grade separated path on the south side of the road, but I believe that has been more or less answered. But still, I would like to urge the committee to consider a south-side approach. I'll agree, it's not pleasant, it won't be pleasant on the part of the trail alongside the state park, but just thinking where the houses are, and thinking primarily of safety, of reducing the number of intersections, because I've biked up and down that road when it's garbage day, and there's garbage cans, and there's a garbage truck, and there's buses coming, and it's mail day, and there's mail trucks, all on that same little, you know, three-foot-wide stretch. And I, I believe all of that could be avoided by having a path on the, on the far side, grade separated for, for bikes and pedestrians. I had another point, and I forgot it. I would just, I guess I would urge the council to choose option D.
Yeah, I think we'll probably be talking about this again sometime, too, if it comes back to you.
Yeah, I guess I'm thinking more in the future, like, if we were to theoretically extend up West Lake Sammamish to Sunset, then that side of the street is just more clear in general. I forgot my other thing, this bugs me. Maybe I'll come back up. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, anyone else? John, can you get the mic for me? You're sort of the designated mic man.
Chair Ray, we do have two online participants that would like to speak.
Okay, well, let's go to online. Chris?
First, we have Eileen Hotchkiss. Eileen, I'm going to make you a panelist now. You should see the option to unmute and turn on your video.
Okay, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Eileen Hotchkiss, and I live off of 193rd Place Southeast in Sammamish Beach Club, and have lived there for over 20, 25 years. My question was really, and maybe it's more just a comment at this point, because someone had addressed the issue of the failing pavement on West Lake Sam. With either option A or C, will the city be able to restrict the size of vehicles that are allowed to drive on West Lake Sammamish? And for example, I'm talking about semi-trucks or large buses like the buses that Expedia uses, because I feel like the road is going to now be more narrow, and the, those vehicles, one, already, I feel like it impacts the safety of pedestrians, but also I think that they, as you were talking earlier about heavy trucks being on these roads, they contribute to the failure of the pavement as well.
Director Moon?
Yes, we're going to need to do some memory refreshing. As you know, this is my second tenure, and for my first tenure, we did do some truck prohibitions. There are a lot of rules that govern where, how, when you can do that. I think we're particularly challenged when that arterial is seen as a frontage road for an interstate.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
And then my only other comment would be that I actually do prefer option C over option A. Living down in Sammamish Beach Club, we do bike or walk frequently down towards, down to the state park and beyond, and I never even, you know, wouldn't be my first choice, although I understand, it wouldn't be my first choice to cut down and walk through the city park and then into Sammamish, into Lake Sammamish, if I'm trying to get into the city. But, but just a comment, I mean, it's good to hear all, all sides of the story. So, and then thank you for all the information.
Thank you, Eileen. I see a clerk.
Yes, Chair. Next, we have Connie Marsh. Connie, I'm making you a panelist. You should be able to unmute and turn on your camera. You should be able to unmute and turn on your camera.
Working it. Hi all, my name's Connie Marsh. I actually live up on Squawk Mountain, but I have just spent the last three weeks of my life looking at Sammamish Cove Park, because there's a pipeline from a development, the Hila Crossing development, that is proposing to tear up Sammamish Road and put a pipe underneath the road, which then I guess would be raised by six feet. And then the city would come and do a fix on top of that. So here's another complexity that was not presented to you, is a private project utilizing that same corridor that is expecting to create a stormwater pipe down through Sammamish Cove Park and into Lake Sammamish. So the other tidbit of information is remember that this is the deed-restricted Sammamish Cove Park. So if you get to past your right-of-way line, you end up in the deed-restricted area, because that was, we, it has restricted funds, ALIA funds, or whatever they're called, was used on that. So then it really turns into a park situation. So you have to watch the width of your alignment, or you get even more interest. So I have a couple of baseline comments. I got plenty of meetings, so I wasn't going to these meetings. So here's my first have at it. One, the concept that we can't make a road less straight because it's an arterial, I think is not correct. We are doing a lot with arterials in our town, and if we are, if we, if we, we want to get to a safety thing like Vision Zero, then the fate, safety concerns of this street should override the straight fastness of this street. There's no reason it could not go down to a design of 25 miles an hour, as long as you make a road that people want to drive at 25 miles an hour. And that makes it easier for everyone to get in and out of their driveways, and all the bikes and pads to feel more safe, whether they're wedged against the park where they have to dive over a very tall retaining wall, into the wetland below to get out of the way of a car, or they have to smack themselves up against I-90 to get out of the way of the car. Neither one is good, right? So the other thing is that area just alongside Sammamish Road in several places has been delineated as a wetland, not within Sammamish Cove Park, but within the right-of-way itself. So when you are creating something that impacts a wetland, your first step is avoidance, and you have to prove that there's no other way to build the road before you can start minimizing your impacts. And this set of concerns went straight to minimizing the impacts to the wetland when there are alternatives that are viable that don't allow that. And so the law in there makes me chafe at how the decisions were set up for choosing the width of the road, and, and, like, the width of the sidewalk, actually, I don't know that it actually has to be that wide, that you would even have to impact the wetland at all. And they just don't give you the option of a narrower sidewalk width along with the two bike paths. So I would, I, I would not let myself be put in the box with all of this. The WashDOT projects are fascinating, they're raising the road, they're going to allow for mammals to be able to go underneath Schneider Creek and finally get to Lake Sammamish, so that I-90 is not such an animal barrier. So that's actually a thing of beauty for our town. And just in case any of you want them, I have all the initial WashDOT reports, they're fascinating to read, but we do have an experience of this exact culvert fish passage happening on East Lake Sammamish Parkway, and we have very little say in what they want to do and, and when. So I would say that I don't know what you're going to do about a private water line going underneath the road that now you say you have to put an overlay on because the road is not working well. Then to be impacted by WashDOT, then potentially nine years down the way, to finally give the South Cove neighbors what they've been, been asking for, for years. So if you can temporarily segment the project, and then make a way so that in this WashDOT area, you can create some method of going through Sammamish Cove Park and using their illegally placed trails, because those were never permitted, in the interim, at least it would give people a way to be able to get to Issaquah in the interim. And then when we solve the larger project, then you could, you could do something else. But it seems like you do need to look at some sort of imaginative interim solutions for this project, because South Cove, you've left them, you've left them struggling for years. I'm done.
Summarize, thank you.
Bye.
Thanks, Connie.
Boy, everybody else got to talk a lot.
No.
No other virtual hands are raised at this time, Chair.
Hi, me again. I remembered my other point. Just speaking as a cyclist, I have never understood the mentality of, with painted bike lanes, that like the professional bikers get the privilege of being in the gutter close to the cars. So I don't remember which option A or B had the complete grade separation, where vehicles were separate and there were no painted bike lanes. Again, option D, having a south-side access would be my preference, but I understand if that's not possible, I would urge not to have painted bike lanes. And that might, that might also help if we're worried about the width, that that could help narrow it down going past the waste, the wetland. That's all, thank you for the time.
All right, great, thank you. All right. Great feedback, great comments. Any other comments tonight? Okay, we're going to move on then. Yep, I just went the wrong direction, I'm sorry. You are typing feverishly. All right, you want me to go first? You were, you were just looked like you were in deep thought. So I actually prefer option A to option C, if, from just a aesthetic point of view, and B from a grade-separated point of view, since it's got the curb there, and I, so that's, that is much more of a personal thing than anything else, but you asked, so that's, that's my, my personal preference is option A with the, the multi-use trail. And then I think the real important thing, I mean, I think getting the right option is important, but I think the schedule considerations are difficult. I think we are right on track to keep moving forward with design, get design as close to done as we can, as quickly as we can. There are so many moving parts that we need to figure out how to leverage the work that WashDOT is going to do, and they have to do, to further our, our activities, too. I don't know that I have an, I mean, if, I had an answer for you, I'd be a lot smarter than I am. So I think that there's a lot of work we need to do between here and there with WashDOT to understand what their schedule looks like, what our resource constraints are going to look like, resources being, you know, we're not going to close both Newport and Sammamish Way at the same time. We've got to do multiple things to this parcel of land. So my challenge to the Public Works Department is, let's see how we get creative, and let's see how we can meet the immediate needs, and then what the long-term schedule is. I mean, this is one of the things, and I think you may recall, but we were talking about this earlier, it's like, you know, when, when, this is, this is important, and I want to get this one done. So let's, if we have to put on our thinking cap to figure out a creative way to do it, let's, let's try and come up with something that maybe isn't optimal, I mean, isn't perfect, but it's the best situation we can come up with. So those, those are my, my thoughts. Before you go, what's, where are we, where are we taking this next? So is it going back to council then for like a committee of the whole? Is that where you're going?
I apologize, I forgot to mention that part. Yes, we are going to counsel on the seven, April 17th.
Yes, Chair Ray, this will be at a regular business meeting.
Okay, are you looking for action at that point?
Yes, we will, to help direct design.
Okay. So we'll, we'll need to make a recommendation out of this, so.
Okay. I have comments that I've kind of typed up feverishly all over the page, so apologize if I kind of go back and forth a bit. A couple things, first and foremost, this issue of avoidance versus minimizing impact to the wetland, clearly the council needs to know some more information about that. Same with the private utility development underneath, so I'm hoping that information can follow this recommendation and come to the full council at its next touch. I'm assuming it's probably, is it April when this is coming back? Okay. Also, I also just wanted to take a moment to, one of our attachments was the community survey results, and the second page of that shows a question, response to a question today and in the future, what modes of transportation do you prefer when traveling on Northwest Sammamish Road? And today, massive amounts of people getting in their cars and driving down it. And then it shows a dip from 54% to 29% in the future in favor of walking and biking instead, which I just want, I think we need to just take a moment and acknowledge how amazing that is, that we have this opportunity to get that many more cars off the road, to encourage people to use multimodal transportation in pursuit of our climate goals, environmental goals, just safety and, and health goals of our community. So I just think that's amazing. So let's just start there and, and go from there. Given all of that, question one, I think I do agree that Alternative C is likely our best option to move forward with to the full council. Painted bike lanes actually are our best practice, and they certainly are important as determined by the community survey, in terms of would bikers actually use this facility? So I think it's important to do that. Also, every year, maybe multiple times a year, that road is used for a major bike race that goes through and then down into the state park, too. So I'm not sure if that was a concern, that's not as important as what the community needs the facility for, but just another consideration there. And also, we want to prevent the kind of interactions where a biker would have to be yelling at, at a pedestrian to, to move, so that way they could pass, especially if there are a lot of bikers that want to do this, which the community survey indicates that a lot of people would want to switch to bike. So I think Alternative C is the right way to go. With question two, I, again, I really appreciate the reality check here. I fully, was fully prepared to come into here and say no, and hold my ground, we need to go with consideration A, and this needs to happen sooner, and how do we make that happen? Given what we've learned when WashDOT came and presented to us, and the way that you've presented the information here, I am very, very reluctantly agreeing with consideration B. That said, I do think, and, and you've walked through some of those today, that there are some things that we can be doing to influence the timing during RFP development. There are clearly things that we can be doing to the road now to fix potholes, to make it more comfortable, and maintained experience. Overlay was one. I do think that there are some, traffic calming can happen a number of ways, doesn't, even if it is a straight road, even if it is up and down. So I think there are other things that we can be doing in that space, too, that are creative. Some communities even use different colors paint, cheap paint that could be used to calm traffic. And it would be good, too, to know if there's the camera there, or not the camera there, but it detects your speed as you go down there. I know no one follows that. So it would be good to get data from that, too, and are there any other things that we can put up there to facilitate traffic calming? So there are some things that we can do in the meantime. I also think that we need to be very clear with the community about who expects this is going to be happening any moment now, about the many reasons why it is very difficult to be doing this next year. I mean, even if we could pull the trigger right now, it would be 23, 24, we're still in design, 20, where was the thing? Let me go to the presentation real quick. 25 would be 25, 26 permitting, and then 27 could potentially be the earliest for construction.
No, I think we could, it would be aggressive, but 25, 26, we could go to construction.
Okay.
I gave a two-year.
Assuming no external factors and all of that. And we had a funding, see, that's another one, we don't have any funding for the construction right now. So this conversation right now is tied into the potential action that the council might take with regard to the Transportation Benefit District, and asking the voters to approve some more spending authority for transportation products around town. So we just need to make sure that this information also is carried through when we have our CIP, our Capital Improvement Plan projects as a council, because the council might say, yeah, that's the case, but maybe we need to prior, reprioritize some of our capital priorities. My read of that is that'll be difficult, because everything in the CIP that we have contemplated funding for is important, especially the utility, and just the things that we consider we have to do by law, and we have to do by comfort or whatever. So that's going to be difficult, but that conversation needs to be teed up for the whole council when that comes back, for sure. Let me just see what other just random comments I have here. I agree with, I think this was you, Councilmember Ray, how do we keep the ball rolling, but recognize, you know, our hands are somewhat tied here, so I totally agree with that settlement. Alternative C, it seems like the TAB had considered that that could be a good opportunity to secure public funding, or exterior funding, too, so in grant funding opportunities and stuff like that. So that's another factor that goes into my thinking around Alternative C being the best one here. I would, if it's okay, if we have staff capacity, I'm looking at you right now, I think it would be good to create a public comment concern matrix about this project, where that could follow the project as it keeps its touch with council, so we can document concerns and questions that have come up, and over time, be able to explain how we're addressing them, or reasons why we can't. It'll be good for council to be able to see that when this first comes to them. It'll also be good for the community to know that they've been heard, that the concern and the question has been accounted for and documented, right? I didn't, who was it that brought up the, I didn't think about the access down into the city park by pedestrian, that's a, that's a good one, so let's make sure we have that noted somewhere, thank you. Also, yeah, there's some more kind of exploration work here in terms of can we restrict vehicle type on an arterial like that? Clearly, we could do it here on Sunset, because we did, but it'll be good to know what, what our options are for that road. And then based on my questions earlier, you know, we have some, some work to do in terms of how is this going to impact driveway safety as people are coming out, public or waste management collection, and are we just, because the, the problem right now is that it blocks the, the bike lane, and I'm seeing there's this large multipath, multi-use pathway. I'm thinking people are going to put their totes out in front of that in the bike lane again. So how, how are we thinking a little bit differently so we don't end up with the exact same problem again? Again, much greater, like way down the line, we got to think about that, but let's just make sure we don't lose track of that. What can we do in the meantime? Yeah? I think that's all I got for now. I, you know, I think just, if it's okay with you, it sounds like we might need to have some more discussion about A or C, but it seems like we're in alignment on consideration B, the timing, or, and if that's the case, then, was that the case? Okay, go ahead, and then I have some more comments.
Okay. So let, so when I was thinking about the A or C question, so the biggest difference between A and C is whether or not the, the bikes are grade-separated. And so when I looked at the community survey, the outreach, the most desired non-motorized facility would be a multi-purpose pathway, and that's, that's option A. The second is a grade-separated protected bike lane, that's not in, on, in the mix. The next one was a buffered bike lane, and that's option C. So. lane, and that's option C. So, you know, so from my perspective, the multi-purpose pathway is what the community said they wanted most. It's less, less expensive, and to address your waste management concern, the multi, the multi-purpose pathway would have that strip in it where we can put waste receptacles on trash day. So, so I'm kind of, still think that that's where my head is on, on that one, but I, I don't like any of the options, quite honestly, on, on the schedule. And I think we're on the absolute right track with moving forward with design. I think we know what we need to do, let's go design. But I don't think we have to commit to a schedule at this point, and I think there's a whole truckload of work to do with WASDOT before we commit to the schedule. And so I, I'm not a big fan of kicking cans down the road, but this is a can I want to kick. So I say we, we keep on keeping on with design, but let's get the rest of the facts and the timeline from WASDOT before we commit to a, a schedule. Director Moon?
Thank you. Thank you for all of that feedback, and I just wanted to clarify, especially for folks in the room, when we bring this committee feedback back to council in April, our hope is to request one action from council, and that's to proceed with the design, with the, whatever the preferred cross-section is of the majority of the council. We will not be having quite the same discussion about the schedule with the council, and the reason for that is, we wanted to have it tonight because we are, is it one week, one week, two, one and a half weeks out from having to produce staff, a draft CIP for the mayor's consideration. And so this input is timely for us, as we think about where we should situate the project. There will be discussion with city administration and the mayor, we'll get their opinion in the mix, and then the city council will be receiving the CIP in May, I believe. So April becomes a little bit late to have that conversation, not that we won't welcome that feedback, but we'll also have more information from WASDOT at that time. So just to clarify, when this comes back to council, we will only be asking for council's direction to proceed with design.
Great. And, and I, I think we, we are in agreement with that, proceed with design.
I think, yeah, I think we're in agreement, proceed with design, but not necessarily.
Which design?
Which design.
Yeah.
And I have a few more comments on that.
Okay.
And so the reason I said that, you know, community feedback had reflected best, in my opinion, C was because the data, the chart that you brought up, that's true, but if you get more granular in the slides that come after that, in the, what's that called? The open house boards, and maybe this will, maybe I'll phrase this as a question too. It looks like we were able to kind of ask specific types of commuters, pedestrians, bike commuters, and drivers about particular options. It did look like, all in all, very small, because there weren't that many people at the event. It did seem like there was a little bit more of a preference to have a protected bike, a facility somehow, that was separate from the multi-use trail. So I want to ask, is that an accurate reflection of this data?
So at the, the open house, it was primarily people within the community, so we didn't have any commuter traffic who used the bike facilities. The, the reason why, the TAB was more in preference of, of option C, because there is people who, coming, coming from out of the area or within the larger Mamish, Cove, Sam, Cove area, could, would use the bike facilities, and if we have it all shared on one side of the road, either side, they would have to either share the road with the cars or cross the street two times to get back to the, the, the direction that they're supposed to go.
I guess then my other question is, is staff comfortable with the committee essentially having a recommendation of, we think staff should go forward with planning, we're having trouble between alternative A and C, and think we, this is a good question for the whole council?
Absolutely.
Oh, okay.
We'll, we'll seek the council concurrence, and that will be really important, so that we can direct the design engineering firm.
Absolutely. So let's, let's put it on regular business, what, the seventeenth? Should be a good, inspirited conversation. All right. Anything else you need on this one?
That's it, thank you very much.
Great. Emily, Matt, thank you very much, I really appreciate. You guys are doing an outstanding job. Thank you all for, for coming. You can stay for the next one, it's going to be pretty riveting too, guaranteed. But we're going to take a five-minute break? Oh.
Just one more thing too, if you have any more comments or questions or concerns, please feel free to reach out to us. I guess if we are taking a break, feel free to come up to us and share our contact info. But let's keep in touch, this is definitely going to be a long process, and I'll just turn it back to you. I just wanted to make sure you know that we're always happy to talk about this, very important priority.
Great, thanks, thanks Zach. All right, we're going to take a five-minute recess. We'll be back at 10 minutes after eight. And we're back from recess. We're going to take up the next agenda item, which is ID 1291, Intelligent Transportation System Capital Project Options, and Isabella Diaz is our transportation, senior transportation engineer is going to be presenting tonight. Isabella, great, Isabelle, great to have you.
Thank you, Chair Ray. Good evening, I'm Isabella Diaz, Traffic Signal Operations Engineer, and tonight I will be presenting the ITS Plan Update. We will be specifically presenting about the draft projects that we are proposing, and our approach to that with the ITS Plan. And just to remind what ITS stands for, is, it is Intelligent Transportation Systems, and it's the use of technology to improve mobility and safety in, in the transportation network. And we have been presenting and engaging both the Transportation Advisory Board and the committee before about the ITS. First, we had discussed about what, what we want the ITS Plan goals and, and objectives to be, and now, as we are moving into the projects phase of the, of the plan, we are coming back to see feedback from the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee. The ITS Plan is included in the 2021, 20, to 2027 CIP, and this is part of our next step for the ITS Plan. So the, the purpose of tonight's meeting will be to provide the update that we have been working on with the ITS Plan. We will first present and the need that we have found for foundational and near-term efforts to support the proposed ITS projects that we are presenting, and then we will hope to seek feedback, or the committee input tonight on the proposed near-term efforts and the proposed ITS projects. And these ITS projects will also be including projects that we are presenting to be incorporated into the next CIP or capital improvement plan, which will be the 2024 to 2025. In specific, the direction that we will be seeking tonight is, first, if the committee support, committee support the proposed focus on foundational and near-term efforts to build the readiness for the future ITS projects, and we will be talking a little bit about that later. If the committee agrees that the prioritized projects that we will be presenting are in alignment with the goals of the ITS Plan, and if we should, and if they should be included in the next proposed CIP. And lastly, does the committee wish to convey any other input prior to us being, finalizing a draft of the ITS Plan and preparing for delivery to the city council? To present a little bit of the project timeline and where we are in the project timeline, in August last year, we had completed an existing inventory of citywide ITS assets. In November, we had created engagement from stakeholders, so we can get, could get the, the stakeholder needs in terms of application of ITS technology in, across the city. Now that we had received stakeholder input and info from the Transportation Advisory Board, the public and internal departments, we, we started the process of creating, the development of projects. And these, since, since November and now, we have been, this is basically the stage that we are, when we are developing this list of projects to be considered. After getting the feedback from tonight's meeting, we, the plan is that we can finalize the ITS Plan Draft, and then we will get, we'll be presenting the results of that ITS Plan to the Transportation Advisory Board, and we will include in, later in summer, about June this year, we will be including these, the recommended projects to the CIP, and also presenting the ITS Plan to the city council. Back in November last year, we had discussed about what the ITS mission and goals were for the city, and we had developed a mission statement, and also had developed IT, what ITS goals will be. The ITS goals will help us, we, as we discussed later, earlier in November last year, the ITS goals are, we will help, would help us determine what our priorities would be to set up the, the ITS Plan, and I will be kind of summarizing what that ITS Plan mission and, and the goals were, were determined from last year's discussion. And the mission was to improve the safety, health, security, and movement of goods, people, services for all modes of the transportation network by using advanced technology, establishing agency coordination, maximizing existing system capacity and infrastructure, and providing real-time traveler information. We had identified six different goals for the ITS Plan, and these goals were, are to improve safety, efficiency, and sustainability of the transportation system, to provide traveler information, on, so we can provide the traveler with modes and, and, and information that would help them make decisions on how, on how they would be doing their daily travels, and provide cost-efficient and effective ITS technology, propose regional partner integration, and monitor transportation performance measures. So we have a brief idea of what our ITS devices are, or our ITS assets are. We kind of classify them into, into three different areas. There's a few devices, the operations, or, and, and maintenance, where we have the central systems, and there's the communication network. The few devices is basically what we can see, what is visible to us in, in mostly the traffic signal, on the, on the roadway network. There are CCTV cameras, we can find vehicle detectors, that's where we can see the dynamic message signs, that the city has four of them across the city, and we leverage to provide information on impacts road, to roadway due to construction or closures. And there is a traffic signal cabinets too. Inside those traffic signal cabinets, we have the Inside those traffic signal cabinets, we have the signal controllers, which are what controls what happens at the signal, who gets the green time, who gets stopped and, and those types of adjustments that we do to the signal phasing. And inside that signal cabinet, we have the communications switch, although that is not specifically a field device that does connect more into the communications network. We do have the central systems. The central systems are those systems that are not, not visibly obvious for us in the field. So those are basically used by oper, by staff, specific staff from the city, in particular for operational purposes in the, in the transportation network. One of them is the traffic signal management system, which is used to control what happens across, having that view of all the signals together and, and what is going on. And that's, that is used to adjust signal timings and different aspects of the signal controllers. There's a video management system too, which is used to monitor what is going on at the, at the signals. The video management uses the CCTV cameras, the field devices to, to city staff are, is able to monitor what is happening at those intersections with the CCTV cameras. That same system is also used to control the dynamic message, dynamic message signs and to display the messages that are used in the, in the board, the, the message signs. There's also, or used to be also with the city, the traffic, the Watch dot traffic buster connection. And that was as the title, it was basically a connection between Watch dot and, and ISACWA. It was, it was mostly a connection, more of a coordination between images. We could see Watch dot images and we could have access to them. And it would be possible with only access, not necessarily control their images or anything Watch dot related. And at the same time, they would have access to our cameras only for viewing purposes. And we will talk a little bit more about the Watch dot traffic buster connection as part of one of the projects that we are presenting. But that one, I had it like on a dash line because we, with, it was housed in the northwest and within the, in the building on 12th Avenue. And over a couple, 10 years ago, we have lost that capability. And of course, with the amount of years that have passed, technology has changed. And right now, it's not on a, in a useful condition. Then we have the communications network, which is basically that connection between the field devices and the central systems that our staff use. The way that the communications work, communications network is able to provide that is with that fiber cables that occur in conduits from signal to signal to the operating systems. And that's where we have the junction boxes and we, part of the communications network includes the communication switches. So that's basically like an overview of our field devices. So when we start talking about these technical terms, we have a general idea of what we are referring to. And we can always come back to this image if necessary. But what we, the other thing that we want to outline with our existing ITS infrastructure is the conditions of that existing infrastructure. In terms of the field devices, currently about 50% of that, of those field devices are outdated and they are not, either not supported by their vendor. So we know that we, if we don't do something about it, they could be at risk of not being functional at any given time. In terms of the-
Isabel, can I ask you just a couple of questions?
Yes.
Because I'm fascinated by this. I just think this is the coolest thing. And so these may not be really germane questions, but I'm asking them anyway because I can. So where are the, the real time, are the dynamic message signs in town?
Where?
Where?
Well, we have four of them. We have one on Highlands on High, High, High Street. Is it, we have one on the Eastlake Parkway, close to the north city limits, one on Front Street. And I am not 100% sure where's the fourth one.
The one on Highlands is on Park.
On Park, sorry. Yes, the main park is on Park Drive, the one on Highlands. And I'm trying to remember where is the last, the fourth one.
I, I, it's not really all that germane. I was just more curious than anything else. So I mean, that, that's great. And then the second question I had is you mentioned the real-time traveler information. What is that and how does that get used?
Well, with, and if I try to answer that, we will be going into the projects.
You know, and if you're going to get to it later, that's fine too.
Person of it, yes. And but, but the way that we complete, right now, other than using the, the, the city communications platforms, we, the way that we have, can, can have direct way, way to communicate to the public about what is going on at the transportation system is by using those dynamic message signs.
Great, well, I'm anxious to see, hear more.
And if, yes, and if I do not answer your question later, please feel free to interrupt me and, and ask me again. So in terms of the central systems, one, we, it is great that we have the, the central systems that we are using currently. But one thing that we need to keep in mind as we start thinking about these future projects is that these current central systems are not able to provide performance measures. We, we want to track how things are being improved with different changes on the city network. There's no way, no, no easy way for us to track that, how the system is performing on and after, before, after scenario with the way that, the current systems that we have. And we'll talk a little bit more into what's necessary for us to get there. And for the communications network, we are, we, we, it is great that we have a lot of fiber communication on most of our signals. In that sense, we are, we are really on a good state. But there are a couple of, of gaps with the communications network. And also, since we have so many signals too, our communications network is not as fast or as ideally we would like it, we would like it to be to not only support the existing ITS infrastructure, but also if we are considering adding more technology to this network, we, we could be facing ourselves in, in communications failures. The way that we see the ITS plan evolving, this is, I think this is a great slide when then we, where we can present where we are and we, where we want to move us with the ITS plan. Right now, we are in a, in what we call the perform state, which is, we are working on, we, we do have some, some standards, operating procedures, but they have, they have been created as we are needing them, as the time that we're needing them based on maybe the experience of one particular staff. And we have been working on standardization on an as-needed basis. The, we will be presenting shortly, some of the projects that we are focusing to be working on right away are more of upgrades, more upgrades and procedures or policies work so we can get ourselves into the managed state. It's, it's because we don't feel like the, our existing structure, it would continue operating on a, on a, as we would expect it to be. That's why we are, we are focusing on these upgrades so we can be on a managed state where we can have control on what is going on. There is an issue and we can go and, and, and go to address it and, and correct it in a standardized way. And so we can get our standards in place and feel in, in that managed state. The ultimate goal of the ITS, as we start implementing those new projects, it would get us on the optimized state. And we mean with the optimized state is that we are able to proactively manage our system and ba, but based on data-driven, on data-driven decisions, that our systems are capable of provide us with the data that we, that we need so we can make adjustments and decisions on, or, or changes and improvements on our ITS technology. We, in terms of the projects, we had started with a huge list of projects of over 50. And then we started this interaction with key departments. And those departments included, included in IT, included Public Works, both from the operational area and from the engineering area and communications as well. So we were actively working together so we can, could provide or highlight those projects that we could start working on with the, with the ITS plan. The other piece of information that, or input that was very key in determining this list or narrowing this over 50 projects list to the ones that we are proposing tonight was also the feedback that we had received from the Transportation Advisory Board on our initial discussions and the ones that we have received from the committee on, on, on past touches. And we are, the way that we are presenting our projects or kind of categorizing our projects are first, the annual equipment upgrades, which are those that we think that are need to, we need to work right away so we can get into that managed state. And these annual equipment upgrades will be including replacing equipment that has reached their end of life or upgrades that we, and this will be done in a way that we could program these all upgrades over multiple years. And instead of having that huge investment all at once, we want to do that on the course of multiple years. Then we will be also presenting what our near-term efforts are, which the one that we can say is a, is an actual project would be developing a detailed communications and well, network plan and is to start that design, that plan to build the, or ramp, kind of ramp up, if we may, that communications network. So it can be, it, it can work on a faster way and more effective way. The others are basically policies. And, and we will discuss how, what those policies are. So there, there, there are not a lot of dollar investments there, but more, more of city staff time and coordination. And those policies are needed so we can determine how the ITS and the signal system will be operated and maintained. So, so we can continue or move along or feel ready to be able to go to the new ITS technology projects will be the proposed ITS. Some are programmed for the 2025 to 2029 after completion of the near-term efforts. But this is a proposal that we are presenting to the committee. And we would like to get your feedback on later. For the annual equipment upgrades, as I said, that's, the expectation is that we do this in a multi-year effort so we can upgrade the equipment to the latest city, to the latest industry, our standards and industry standards. The signal controller upgrades, though we, there, we have 24 controllers that we have identified that need to be replaced. And the way that we are proposing that we go about that project is in between three years, within a period of three years. So we can have that, those controller upgrades ready before we work on the, on the communications network improvement. We have also identified traffic signal cabinets that need to be replaced. And there's 23 of them that have also been updated now to city standards, same situation as the signal controller upgrades. And we are also, since those, the cabinet replacement is a, is a higher investment than the, than what the signal controllers are, we are proposing that to be replacing a larger span between 2023 and 2029, within six years. CCTV camera upgrades. We have done some upgrades with CCTV cameras. But with that said, we, there, there are still, we, we didn't upgrade all of the cameras. There are still some cameras that are not up to our standards for us as the IP web capabilities for, for those cameras. And we have identified 15 of them that are not up to our standards and we, that will need to be replaced. Otherwise, they, at some point, they can just, just not be useful any, any longer or not being supported by their manufacturer. And for that, we are proposing to do that within two years, starting right away. The dynamic message sign upgrades, that, those four dynamic message signs, we are aware that can be, can get to a failing position any, anytime, any day now. And if they do, the manufacturer does not support that, that, those, those dynamic message signs. And we could be in a situation where we don't, we have them there and we don't, they, they no longer work for us. So that's why we are proposing dynamic message sign upgrades. And we do have on the full list of projects, based on the feedback that we have received from different stakeholders and, and also from the committee on how important they are to provide the up-to-date information to the, to the public, like right away. So we do have that included in our full list of CIP projects. But we believe that before we start thinking about adding these dynamic message signs, we need to make sure that we're not going to have issues with the existing ones. Because that, the dynamic, the dynamic message sign of grace, it is providing a sign. I was not around at the time that they were installed, but I do know that providing these- I was not around at the time that they were installed, but I do know that providing these signs is a, is a considerate investment. When we are bringing new signs, there's a lot of structural components involved to, to, to installing those signs that are considered investments in dollars. So then we have the near term efforts. And the near term efforts, what we want is to provide that foundation for those new projects that we want to bring to the city. Those sort of efforts are primary, primarily policy and plan focused over the next two years. So this would be more collaboration with staff, between staff and, and also interagency jurisdictions with one of them. But the, the one that is key from these near term efforts is that communication net, network plan. That is one of, or basically the, the first thing, aside from upgrades that we want to do over the years, the first thing that we want to make sure we have before providing new ITS infrastructure is that communications network plan, making sure that communications network will not be failing before or, or during, or even before we start including these ITS new projects. Then in terms of the policies, we have identified three main policies that we, that we need to put in place before those other projects. And there is some predecessor component of these policies for the projects that we are presenting. One of, the CCTV camera policy might not be a predecessor for one of the projects that we are implementing, but it's something that we feel like we really need, because we already have cameras, CCTV cameras that are being used for public, public use, for public viewing. And, but we don't have policies in place. And those, and those are things that we need to put in place and, and not only with public, with safety, security.
Isabel, just a quick question from
Yes.
Well, it sounds like you might be kind of getting there. I was just curious what we meant by, by policy. So, yeah, these are the same cameras that like people use to see if there's snow on the roads, right? So is it like what is considered an appropriate use of these cameras?
Exactly that. And who, who gets access to and at what level they will get access to, to those cameras. The traffic signal timing policy, these are policies that will help us. And, and some example I can provide is how often do we want to update our signal timings? How often do we want to do a, 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 not a study, like, I don't want to make it, want to make it sound like a full study, but how often we want to look at our traffic volumes there on signals? So we can change and adjust based on, on, on current traffic. I know before the pandemic, we had a different traffic pattern that we had during the pandemic and certainly than we have now. So we, not only because over time, also because the last couple of years have been traffic very ve- varying in terms of traffic changes, traffic volume changes. That is something that we'd like to address with traffic signal timing policy. Also, if we want to implement, implement new safety features, like the leading pedestrian interval, we want to know how, how are we applying that? How are, what are the, the SOPs, the standard operating procedures that we want to follow before implementing traffic signal? Implementing safety features like the leading pedestrian intervals. The Wash Dot Signal Operations Memorandum of Understanding. We used to have a, a, an MOU with Wash Dot that was, is over 15 years old. And based on our review of the, of that understanding, it doesn't say a lot. What we, that, that understanding was basically focused on who to go to or who to talk to if we wanted to do signal timing coordination or any kind of adjustments to signals impacting either Wash Dot, us impacting Wash Dots or Wash Dot impacting ours. It was more of a listing names of who to talk to for things like that. But, but I think, we think that we could do so much more with updating those Wash Dot Signal Operations Memorandum of Understanding. One thing I can, I can mention is how, how, how our response times to incidents or fail, of failures for, of, of traffic signals should be. What are both our operating procedures to attend signal issues? That's one, that's one thing to mention. And the other, how, how often can we coordinate our signals together? For the proposed projects that go beyond what, beyond what the upgrades and near term efforts were, are. And between those 15 projects, the full list of the 15 projects is included in the matrix, the project matrix and the proposed program that we had included in the, in the packet. But among these projects, we had identified six projects to be considered in the next AIP. And the reason why we have identified these six projects is, is before we looked at how the order of those projects could be implemented based on the needs of the projects that need to go before that. So that was basically what, what, what drove our proposal of the, of the, of the priority projects. And just to provide like a brief description of what those projects are. The first one, the Communications Network Plan Implementation, is that network plan that we have identified as the near term effort, it would be the implementation of that plan. The, the near term effort was the, the plan and design of that communications network improvement. But with this project to be included on the CIP will be the implementation, to build the, the construction of that communications network plan. Wash Dot Traffic Buster Connection, here's that Traffic Buster Connection. That's, that's where we can, from I-90, there was a connection to the main city hall. And we want to rebuild that connection with our existing Public Works building. And the good news is that based on the communication that we have done with Wash Dot, there is not, there won't be a lot to be done to do that. There, there's not a lot that needs to be constructed, because the, the length between, there is a, a connection point close to, or what we could consider kind of close to our Public Works building. So it, it won't take a lot of, 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 of investments in, in order for us to do this. And Wash Dot will be providing some portions of the system. We will be responsible to do the, the physical connection for that. The Renewal Trail Fiber Project Phase One. I mentioned before that we had that, those signals interconnected with fiber, which is good. But we have a couple of gaps in those fibers. And we, we do have the connection, but those are leased fibers. So we want to construct that Renewal Trail Fiber Project that would be able to cross that gap between North, East Aquah and South, that is split between I-90. So that's where we don't have our own connection. We are leasing that portion. And that was identified between operations staff and IT, like, like us, one critical gap that we will need to have our own connection to. So we can connect the city, the city hall, main building across north and south of I-90. Traffic Signal Performance Measurement Pilot. So for this project, this, what, this is a project that we have identified with a small investment, be a, being able to get traffic signal performance. And when I say a small investment is after we had completed some upgrades and, and, and the policies needed. We want to use a signal coordination, signal coordination plan that was prepared before the pandemic, with volumes before the pandemic with a consultant. And we were just ready to put it in place and then we, the pandemic happened. So it was not useful any longer, that plan, once, once we got these traffic flows lowered so long, so, so significantly. So we want to use that same coordination with smaller efforts, which will be including actual volumes to that and do some adjustments to that coordination plan without having to do, rebuild it entirely. And after we do that and implement that, we want to have the system that would be able to do performance measures before implementing that and after. So we can start tracking or have, have a ways to track not only this implementation, but also if we do changes to signal or adjustments to future signals, we are, we, with having that system, we can, we are able to measure the, the results. The Video Analytics Pilot, and this is something that we have talked about in the past. This is an emerging technology that is used with implementing video cameras or video detections specifically. Because we do have our video detection standards that are radar, which are great detecting the vehicle, but not, they don't necessarily detect multimodal or, or have that capability of differentiate between modes of transportation. And with having a video analytics pilot, will the, the idea is that we implement the infra, the technology necessary so we can track tho- those safety, in, safety components of